Go on.
Oh, well, on the upper. Just we might, actually, that would work. All right, you have everybody here. You calling it to 8:00 or 7:00? Please stand for the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is Susan.
Yeah, hi. My name is Susan Martin. This is my fiancee, Dawn. This is my fiancee, Dawn. We're applying for a variance to have a garage built on the side of our house. And the property setback that we'd like to have would be 12 feet off the property line instead of the 25. So that's our plan. It's a two-car garage. It is in between the property line and the house itself. The current garage is very small, and I would like to build something bigger. So anything else I need to say? I don't have to read this whole thing, do I? Actually, my neighbor is here. The fact that is affected, this is Mrs. Lopez.
Mrs., I'm sorry, your name is?
Mrs. Lopez.
I visited the property. It's well-marked, so if you want to take a look at it, I'd like to schedule a public hearing from the next date of May. Is it May 13th or something like that?
May 9th.
May 9th.
Oh.
May 10th. Close.
May 10th.
May 10th. Are you the blue house that sits back in?
I am.
Okay, because I came over today to kind of look. I saw where, I saw where your mailboxes are across the street. And we were trying to figure out, and I saw where Mrs. Lopez lives. And I saw your house goes all the way back, and it's the blue house.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so you drive up the driveway and the garage is attached right now.
Yes.
And it would just be over to the side of that.
And we saw, I saw the tree line you were talking about here.
Yes.
So you're not adding to that garage?
It will be a detached garage in this case. And eventually, at some point down the road, I hope to convert the existing garage to a family room. But that's not feasible right now, money-wise.
Mrs. Lopez, how do you feel about all this?
I really don't mind, because I really can't see, because there are trees between our properties. It is 12 feet from my line, though. That's the only thing. It's supposed to be 25s, but they're suggesting only 12 foot off the line. And if they're going to put a garage in there, they're going to have to dig into the little hill that's there. And I just want to make sure whatever construction that the builders are, don't pass the property line. And then digging into the hill won't affect my line either. And this is just a one-time variance, right, for the garage? Is that correct?
It'll be very specific for whatever is asked for. So it would be just for this garage and the side setback.
Yes. I'm not worried about building it, you know? A lot of other people have added on separate garages in the neighborhood.
Again, there'll be an opportunity at the public hearing to talk again next on the tech.
How big is the lot total, three acres?
Total is three acres. It's kind of an odd shape, though.
So that's really the only spot that's going to work, on three acres?
Well, out the back of the house, this was subject system, and then it goes down into a very wet area. We have some trees planted there, but, I mean, it's all poots right now. And then on the other side, we have the same problem on both sides, where the water just runs on both sides of the house downwards the stream to that. So there's always, after rainfall, like wet puddles there. It would be a lot more fill and distance if I had to do something like that.
Lopez, how far is your house from the property line?
My house?
Yeah. Or any?
My house is right on the Circle Cherokee vein. And I have a side street, low walk, right on. I'm not sure how many feet it is. Probably 150, maybe? I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I estimated roughly around 200, because I know my driveway is 300 feet. And I know that because I have, I have lighted hoses to go all the way out to the front of the road. Mrs. Lopez's house is, yeah, I could kind of show you on the map.
I can drive by there. No, I looked at it, it looks good. You have to lose one big pine tree in the middle of it.
That's right. That's right. I didn't realize you were all there. You couldn't have just knocked on my door. My dog didn't even start. Yeah, really, you're good.
I just did a quick turnaround. I could see the green tape around.
That's right. Yes, that's where we're planning it.
And it is all pretty thick woods right there. And that's the first time I would ask is if Mrs. Lopez saw it. If she didn't mind, that'd be the only person that would be affected.
I think so, yeah.
And it's a convenient location of your house, the other left side. And I can see it drop down here, and I know it drops down here. Here's the, you know, this is a, you know, really wet.
Yes, yeah.
Looks good. It'd be recently approved. And this, how is this full two-story garage, a big garage?
It'll be like a story and a half. I actually have a picture, but it don't have the doors in the front, roof going back, and like a little loft up there. I haven't decided yet if I want to put the stairs on the inside or the outside to access that. But I would put that on, not on her side, on our side, if I did the outside, so.
It's all solid bedrock right there. Outcrops exactly where the garage is going. That's why there's a shelf there. So in terms of being, you know, back snow, or a little future erosion leading to Mrs. Lopez's property, that'd be a very, very little chance, anything like that. So we'll have to, when we build it, build essentially, you know, a wall there, a concrete wall on that back side if we get that rock to pave it out.
Yeah, 12 feet should be still room to put a ladder up. I know we did, I think I wasn't at the meeting, but I think you approved one not long ago. It was a big garage, like five feet from the line.
If you ask for five, we made him go 10.
Was it? I was aware that five was too close. Because you couldn't put a ladder up and repair and do something without getting any neighbors present. Because he was putting a higher, like a 30-foot-high one. I was looking at that, too.
Yeah, we were kind of thinking that we needed at least enough room for a lawnmower. And we have a small pickup truck, you know, so like we thought 12 feet would be good if we ever had to bring a small piece of equipment around the back for some reason. So I have a question about what do I need to do at like the next meeting? Do I need detailed plans or anything yet, or pictures, or, you know, design ideas? What do I need to tell you so I can be ready?
Typically, this is the way. I mean, basically, just sort of repeat this, but it gets published so that everybody...
Yeah, it's very not much more than what you're doing here.
Oh, okay.
Speak in favor or against it if they want. So this is just sort of planning to make sure we have some idea of what it is before the public hearing as well.
Yeah, the idea is really not to get up, you know, to try and build things in code. That's what all the questions were for. Can you get there another way?
Yeah.
That's really what we're doing as far as questions go. So just, you just have the same meeting, pretty much.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, I guess if I were looking at that, you know, it would be possible to turn it on a little bit of an angle to get more space. Let's get the angle on. It's kind of the same as the house. So the front of the garage lined up with the front of the house?
The more you turn it, the more you're going to head into where the water moves down the side of the property. Yeah, like even the garage will be a little bit, I don't know how many feet exactly, forward from the house to avoid that thick area.
Squeeze it in there.
I think to make a motion in a public hearing? Second floor. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Just come back on 10.
Okay.
We'll notify your neighbors and everything. You know, it'll be an official thing with a sign, I assume, and...
Okay.
And just basically be prepared to do this again.
Okay. And if anybody needs to come over, I work from home, so I'm home to just ring the doorbell or do your thing.
Usually, it involves like night guard or...
Oh, yeah.
I get dressed a lot.
I start work at 8:00, but sometimes I'm in my network. It's fine, I, you know, just ring the doorbell. If I'm not quite, you know, I'll throw my sweat on and I'll be downstairs.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
And done?
Right, go.
Good evening, I'm Doug McFlary.
Hi, I'm Donna Camparth.
Why don't you sort of describe what you're doing?
Okay, so we'd like to put a solar array in Donna's pasture on Pine Grove. It's just above the dog kennel on the opposite side of the road, on Pine Grove, in the pasture there. And we spoke to the planning board last Tuesday about a little question about what the front of the house was in RR2 for solar systems. And they said what we're planning on having it is clearly not in front of the house, so that's fine. But we would like to request a variance of the 50-foot setback from the road so that we can tuck it in close to the fence, a little closer to the road, about 26 feet from the road instead of the required 50. And that's because you get better sun, because there's hills and forests to the east and south. And so the closer you have it, the less sun you get. And I did a little calculation in the variance packet. It was about, I think it was 12% of the sunlight due to the shade. So we'd like to kick it back like that. It also is probably a bad installation in the middle of a currently being-used horse ground, a horse and a couple of goats there. So right in the middle, it just doesn't look as good. It's just not as neat as tucking it back, particularly from the house as it looks towards the south, across the ground, everything. Donna and her husband would rather not look right at the variance, so it's tough to hide some trees in the corner.
And what type of an array is it?
It's a solar auto...
Like size and...
15-foot deep, so it'll be five panels deep. And, oh, sorry, five panels by 90, nine panels wide. Coverage about 16-foot deep by about 50-foot wide.
And so one array, 60, 50-foot by 15-deep?
Correct. 13.25 kilowatt. So what that's worth? I don't know if they put that on here. Oh, and it'll be about nine and a half foot above ground level. And that's what tall, the height of that?
So this, this is just relative to any structure? Is there something specific about solar?
And how is it mounted?
On screw-in pylons by a company called Solar Foundations out of Boston Spa. Screw-in pylons.
Well, that's what I'm trying to... They may have some kind of law that wants the solar structures in particular, or is this...
Do we have a standard construction? Do we have some sort of law that relates this to the...
This is the whole point. I'll spend some time looking at the laws on solar of the town there, actually. So, yeah, there's quite an impressive discussion of the reason that the town would like to have it there. Everything from January...
Well, no, just talking to the board members here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a...
There isn't, oh. I don't know how it relates to you, because, again, this is way too quick to come here.
Yeah, I know.
So, yes, the side setbacks were what was supposed to be addressed here. How it all fits into the code, whether that's all appropriate for the height. I think that's something to be addressed for the size.
So you always just look at that?
Not that it's that big a deal, but the front of the setback, were you measuring from the edge of pavement?
Edge of pavement.
And right, it's really on these setbacks, that Pine Grove is a 50-foot wide right-of-way. So you're really just, just for your numbers, you would start, you would measure 25 feet from the center line, and then go back your distance. So here might be a little greater proportion. Instead of being...
Your fence might be of a setback.
Yeah, so it's not from the edge of pavement. It's 20, your setback would be a minimum of 25 feet from the center. That road isn't, but there was a, that is, I can, I'll look there. But that whole road was reconstructed at the dog kennel of, you know, the, not this washout, but the one 30 years ago when they redid it. And they have a map on file for that road. So I'll look there. But in general, the Pine Grove is a turnpike, and it's owned by the state. And it's 50-foot wide all throughout.
So if it's exactly 50-foot wide, my setback numbers are okay. But the true setback starts 25-foot from the center of the road.
Yeah, and then road is probably 18 or 20 feet wide.
So it's not 50-foot wide, so it's actually going to be...
So your distance is, your calculation should be a little bit...
Yeah.
Still...
Yeah. We thought it would be appropriate to set it next to the fence, right? Might have a little walkway there, just wasted space. So essentially, set it up to the fence is what you're going to do. And it's the best solar radiation, incoming solar energy, best sunshine.
How visible will it be from the road? Like as far as, but when you're driving up the street?
It's not going to be invisible. People are going to be seeing it. So if you were standing in the road, if I may, the panels will be tilted towards the south. So you'll see the back of the panels, and they're generally a white plastic backing sheet. Now, there's the fence, and there's persidia between the fence and the road, so they grow up. But it's certainly not going to be invisible. How visible is it? I guess it depends on who's looking and what they want to see.
The road is also higher. I believe, but our property kind of goes down. So it's not, you're on the same, the same line looking at the back.
Just for the purposes of a minute, Doug, your position in this discussion?
On this, I put down my name on the, I'm a consultant.
Is it consultant?
I've got some experience in solar energy, including having targeted Houston Valley and solar energy, putting a few climbing panels and work for a company. So just trying to help Donna get into a good quality system, located in the right spot to get the most efficient system possible. I'm not, I'm not paid.
Not paid consultant. Thank you.
I mean, I guess I don't know how objectionable it would look. Is there a way that you could reasonably screen from the road? Troubisher, maybe?
Well, there's persidia bushes there. And I don't know if you got the, I apologize, it's not quite as complete in the application package, because I just learned, just filled it out today, actually.
You have some pictures here.
There are some overview pictures. I don't know if you have.
The fence is four feet high, and the persidia is at the 4-foot height right now. The goats kind of keep it trimmed back on the pasture side, which they won't do that if the solar is there. And it easily can, it's like they can easily go higher.
Can I come up and show you the picture?
I don't know if you have this one. I don't know if you have, like, what says top of solar array. So you can see the persidia bushes, but you can also see the barn in the back, too. So it's certainly not going to be invisible. Of course, the persidia only bloom in the spring, right? And, yeah, like this is right now, they're not blooming, you can see through them, so.
So you're, it's, again, you said it's this way, and it's going to face the panel.
It's going to face the...
So we're going to see the back of the panel. So if you put, if you, if you add it, I don't know how much of a burden it'd be to have additional evergreen screening in front, but that wouldn't block the, it wouldn't block your sun, but it'd just be extra cost for you to put up?
Correct.
Be a problem?
Correct. Putting evergreens between the road and the fence?
Yeah.
Could be done. But is there...
In place of the persidia?
In front of it or behind it or something? I don't know.
I, happy to do it, you know, plant everything. But I would check with the town highway person, because a lot of snow is going to be pushed down there. I don't know how well they'd survive, but certainly it could be done.
Right in against where your fence is. How, so the snow, when you, when the flow of snow, does the snow ever hit the fence? Is it that close?
Not that I recall. But we have, we have hemlock on the other end at the, probably the same distance as a fence. And we haven't lost any of the hemlock to the snowball spray. I should say we lost one, but I think that was more to my, my doing then. Putting a snow blower on it.
I just hesitate a little bit. One of the great things about solar is that it's very low maintenance. I'd hate to get into a position where the owner has to maintain a screening by some request from the town, because what if, you know, what if the tree dies? Do you have to go out and replace it?
You can always move it 50 feet back off the road. You can move it 50 feet back off the road, just to say, that's, I think, a reasonable question.
Right. And again, I, it's a reasonable question, but I don't know how reasonable is to maintain a 50-foot hedge of pine trees right next to that.
So even in the screening, in this chapter, even if you weren't looking for a variance, are they talking about, is that, I never really read this chapter before, you know? Is screening required, even if it's, even if you're not getting a variance?
This section about screening is actually about industrial.
So there really isn't anything in here for residential?
I mean, I did, or something, the only thing that is...
There isn't really, I haven't had time to look yet.
Yeah, I've never seen it, I've never come up before, as I'm just asking. I said, you're asking for a variance, so...
It's 150-32 for solar. Does that one little pair of dry tubes that it's instead of... What's it, 150-32?
Should be encouraged, Rod, it should be encouraged. It's great that you're doing it.
Thanks. Yeah, again, the real question, again, if there's another 50 feet back, it would be fine. It wouldn't be a variance needed. It just really hurts the sun level. So if a variance is possible, we'd like to request it. If it's not possible, there's always other options or possibilities. You can always lose power due to shading and add more panels. There's always options. But again, we'd rather not have it in the middle of the horse pasture. I think that's the biggest issue with Donna.
It is. I mean, it's, to me, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing. I don't, I can't have it in the middle of my pasture. To me, it, it would, it's almost going to look, from the road, whether it be on the side, right outside the fence, inside the fence, or 20, 12, 20 feet in, it's going to look the same from the road.
Right.
For me, I feel, the closer you put it, you snug it into the fence with the persidia there, it's going to be a little bit more obscured, rather than sitting in the middle of my pasture. The apple trees are going to come down one way or the other. It's going to be visible.
Well, for our purpose, you're asking about the variance, that's one thing. But it did go to the planning board already? And what, did they have any, do they have anything about screening for the road, regardless if it was that? Did they, did they bring that up? So it's really... So you're right, I see what you mean. It doesn't make any difference. If you went back a little bit more, you'd still see it. If you put it on the back side, can you put it on the back side of the pasture?
No, because as I felt there, where you want to put it is the best place to get the majority of the sun.
Yeah, and then, again, you hear a lot more people about opinions about it than we do. So, you know, for you, it's not a good idea to put it out there where it might bother some people. You know, we're all ears to that, because, you know, we want it to be, you know, where everyone, you know, is comfortable with it. So that's the goal, is to have a system there that just works, everyone's happy with it, you know? The, as I said, the discussion in the town law about, you know, some of the environmental benefits of this and community benefits and all this kind of stuff are pretty impressive. And so, you know, we want everyone to be, so again, that's a request.
From what we saw zoning, when we looked at the pictures, if they put that in the middle of the pasture, it will look a lot worse than it would if it was bad by the... The freestanding structure in the middle of the pasture would look awful compared to what it's going.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't think, I mean, if it seems like that's the right place for it, that's fine. I'm just questioning whether does it to be screened or not, I guess is the only question.
I, I will not probably pick up the persidia and put thousands of dollars' worth of pine in front of the fence. It's just not in my budget to do.
I'm not sure that's the only option for screening.
Yeah.
I'm open to suggestions for screening.
I don't know.
Just a matter of like, it's, I understand you don't want to see it in the middle of the field, but everybody's going to see it, regardless of what happens, you know, whether you put it 50 feet or near there. And if there's something you can do that would make it more appealing, it's just, it just helps, that's all. And I understand the maintenance issue. I understand all that stuff. I'm just, you know, for the same reason, people, you don't want to see it. Other people aren't going to want to see it either. That's all.
going to want to see it either, that's all.
Did you ask, you're only in one neighbor across the road, you have the dog kennel, she talks to Dawn?
They're not.
And she's pretty far down, isn't she?
She would probably be, she's going to be pretty close to it. She's going to be a crossman, but that whole lot across the street, which I own.
Yes, and you own a lot across the street.
Is all trees.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Right, she's diagonally from you.
She's not going to see it if, I mean, she has to go through, you know, has to go through the trees in, in the summer, she can't see through that at all. It makes her privacy from the road.
I would make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this for next month, the same night we were talking about, what was it?
May 10.
10, 9:00? Okay, second?
All of May 10.
Bye.
Yeah, so same, same deal, so.
Yeah.
The neighbors will be notified and anybody's, and it's, the news goes out, and so anybody can come in and say what they want about it, and when we, we can consider the variance and when we, you know, we can pass it with conditions or not with conditions, so think about it and go up and hello, can I, is anybody up there?
Yeah. That's a good location. Can you, is there anything that you can do that could somehow just show it, a picture, a rendering or something of what it would look like in the road? I think that, you know, I know it's hard, and I want you to, as many, um, just.
Just put a couple of poles up and rope across, show the outline there.
Would that be good? You know, just that way your writing could see, because you can't really tell elevations unless you see it, you know, because it's already behind the fence.
Yeah, the lady that was here with the garage, I went over to her place and she had bright green string up outlining where the garage was going to go, so.
So that safety tape, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That could be a great idea.
Just for, to see that you get a perspective of size.
Yeah, because it, you know, people are saying, you know, 50 feet, it's 50 feet wide and it's, it's only nine and a half foot tall, so it might just be a lot easier and takes the guesswork out of what it looks like and anybody who's looking for it or.
Good idea, can do.
Thank you.
And which neighbors? Who's, who would be the, how far do you go from the neighbors?
500 feet?
I think so, right? Yes, it's 500, I believe.
Yeah, 500 feet, so if you put a, any property within 500 feet of yours.
Even if it's, even if it's just land, right?
I think so, but, yeah.
And it's from any, I mean, from any boundary, not just the.
Yep, yeah, not just the room, yeah.
And, but also, I mean, it gets published in the newspaper and.
Yeah, that they will sign out or something, etc. But, but that way.
So again, anybody from public can come and talk about it, some people may come and talk in favor of it. I mean, and it says here, that's the one thing that we were looking at, is it says that we opt to, you know, accommodate and encourage the request as much as possible to, you know, give access, you know, so that you can move it where the access for somebody is there, so. From that standpoint, it is within the law, but it's reasonable request, I think. I don't think anybody's opposed to the thing in general, but it is a large structure that are not very attractive to any neighbors, that's all.
But I can put it anywhere as long as it's 50 feet from the road, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you follow, yeah, if you follow the zoning requests, then, yeah.
But you want to put it where it makes sense, you know, efficiency wise and everything like that, so.
Right, so. Does it still need to be approved? Forget the variance, but does the planning board need to be come for a special use permit or is it, is it approved? What do you do, the planning board do with it?
No special use permit.
So they go before the board just to tell you that they're doing it?
Yes, they came, they were gracious enough to come before us and describe what they wanted to do, and they brought Bob Ryan, and Bob Ryan, you know, is not necessarily a good special use permit.
So they can do it if they want, wherever, I mean, just, but if it's, you know, in the.
Yeah, we, we first went to the code enforcement officer, Tracy Church, and they looked at some of the laws and said, there was a question about what in the RR2 front of the house meant, and so that's where we went from the planning board, but as long as it's not in front of the house, as long as we meet the setback rules, we just think it's a $50 bill.
What's the front of the house question you just asked?
Well, just in other words, because it's really not in front of the house, it's over there.
Oh, that, so it's not.
I defer.
No, it really is.
So it's not allowed to be in the front of the house?
It's in front of the barn.
Is that what it says?
No, it's because of, you know, the setback goes across the whole boundary of the house to your.
Oh, yeah, it was the front setback.
Right.
It's in front of the house.
Yeah, it's in, it's in front of the barn.
So it's, it's still the front setback?
It's still the front setback, yeah.
Are you going to ask the question? Somebody was going to ask the question.
I was just trying to figure, I understand about the front, that's all. I didn't understand if there was a question. It does get complicated more often than it would at Scranton, but.
So we'll see on May 10.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just the meeting minutes?
The house's foundations in there.
Stephanie, do need to note that I'll be attending the usual meeting instead of Nicole. Nicole was scheduled to attend the town board meeting, I'm going to be going instead.
Okay.
For $50.
The May one you're talking about?
April. April, two days from today.
She gave me $75.
Oh, okay, so you're going to go to the town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what I said?
Yes. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Do we usually put the more detailed answers in the notes?
Yeah, it was the whole wording and how we answered.
You mean there's both yeses and noes?
On the surface.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's the case. With regards to that, we, we need to have a, a record of how everybody voted, not just, somebody to have an extra little comment and stuff like that, just kind of do from those sheets of paper on this.
You need, for, on the minutes?
So from the, yes, the voting sheet?
See, I didn't do these ones, so I have no idea. This is my first one for this one. I don't.
Okay, that's all, no, it's not, it's not a big deal, we can just change it, I know you're going vacations.
Yeah. I know Susan's taking notes, too, right?
$100. Yes, I am. I took the, the minutes, but the documentation came from the previous clerk. So I don't know if she would be interested in enhancing in, you know, I was going to say, could you just attach copies of the voting sheet, or does she have to retype? Well, probably she has to retype it into the minutes. I can see the look on Paul's face.
I'm just thinking that if anybody could actually read my handwriting, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm thinking the same.
But yeah, I mean, usually we have been there.
I don't know what, what they want in it.
After a public hearing, we have to, there are sheets that each member of the board has to complete into a series of questions, so each person, so these folks will come on May 10. We'll close that down, take a vote. And each one of the sheets that we complete has to be entered into the minutes. Typically, for instance, in this first one, it says board member Hackelman voted to approve, and under question one, she would say no, because I love America. I don't know, whatever she writes. And then the next one, yes, because blah, blah, blah. So whatever the verbiage is that's on the sheet should also be included, the whole thing. So you become the cryptologist trying to read the handwriting of the members of the zoning appeals.
The minute, so that's very different from our meeting, because we don't do, we don't do that, right?
It's just a completely different process.
This is about, we don't, we don't do much here.
We do know we're streaming, right?
Yeah. We do, a use variance, area variance, and an interpretation, and that's it.
Okay.
But it all really comes down to the answers to those questions. So if somebody disagrees with our decision and wants to bring it to sue, you know, whatever is in our goal, so they're going to go to this, and this would be an easy out for, for them.
All right. So whatever the question was, write down what.
The full answer.
The full answer.
To demonstrate that we've given each of those questions our full consideration, so. They're pretty much all the same, it's not too much.
Yeah, they generally are.
But that's only for a public hearing, though, right?
Only for the, for the, only for the vote on a variance during a public hearing.
Yeah, there's a sheet we all turn in, it's a, they're all packed, everybody turns it in, and it's like, just one sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, but it'll, it'll have these, these questions on it, and we'll each fill it out.
Okay.
And so it's not like you have to.
Right.
Grab it then.
Right.
It's, it's, I'm going to say it's written, handwriting aside, it's written, and then.
So it'd be, in fact, it's their handwriting.
We also usually read them out loud.
Yeah, we do, but remember.
Yeah, read out loud.
Okay.
If you look on, on her, like, her application on page three, Stephanie?
On Susan's?
Yes, you see those, the questions here that go from A to E?
Yes.
These are the questions we answer.
Oh, okay.
But they're on a different, they, we actually have a sheet, but these are the questions we answer.
All right, so it's just everybody's answer under each of the A, B, C, D.
So in preparation for the public hearing, we need those sheets. Typically, we hand them out, we, meaning you, I'm using the royal we.
Okay.
They are handed, they're distributed to the members of the board.
Okay.
With each applicant.
Yeah, with for each application.
We should just have a big, we should have a big pile of them and just stick them in every application.
We can. I can't work on that.
If you're back from vacation by May 10th and you come back.
I don't know, it's a good question.
Having to run upstairs and run these things off at the last minute.
Okay.
Run these things off, what am I talking about, a mimo grave? Oh my God. Copy them at the last minute, so they're usually available for us, so we have to add each scene.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, so I always.
Okay. All right, when that gets closer, I'm going to reach out to you for more clarification.
You got it. That's $150 for additional information. Yes, we are.
Charge the town.
Street.
So how do we want to handle that? So we don't want to approve the minutes then?
I don't know it. I don't even know where they are.
Yeah, let's.
They're upstairs somewhere, so tips would know where they are, I have no clue.
Can you send her an email before you leave?
Yeah, just.
I can, I'll text her and ask her to, because she may start back in after her meeting, so let me just tell her she needs, we need the sheets that all you answered to the questions from the public.
Yeah, well, it's not a big idea.
And then have the bold documents of the.
Yes, we'll need another, we'll need an updated.
Okay.
Have Stephanie give me a call.
Yes, all right.
Usually the chairman is putting them down.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Nope, nope, nope. Comment from public.
Public comments, sorry.
I'm just waiting for a little bit. I think because there was a period of time when residents got bounced between planning and zoning, planning and zoning, and sometimes it took months. But now we've overpenced saving. I don't think it's a good idea to just have someone come this morning, fill out an application, and then be in front of you. I really think whether it's planning or zoning, we have to stick to the business days that are required before it gets on the agenda.
What are the business days?
10 for planning, 5 for zoning.
Okay, so we're at, I mean, we, we talked on the 7th, what I mean, 7 days ago?
No, I mean like tonight, that, you guys, I wouldn't, myself, I don't want to come in and have something in front of me to look at and have no idea of like what's transpired before, that I'm able to like look up the code for the solar, look up the code for the variance and everything, just.
Did I send an email to you?
Did you? What?
I think I sent it to Howard.
Maybe this evening, but I haven't.
No, no, not this evening.
You included their address, I looked them up on, to see if they were.
Yeah, because I, I thought I picked your email address, that might be it. I, I sent out a, an email regarding this.
But their application wasn't here till we.
No, the application, they were putting the application in, so.
Because the same thing's happening, everything, everything gets put in at the last minute now, it seems like, which isn't fair to, to Stephanie for one, because the packets were already made, so now she has to go and put in the additional information. Nobody has had time to look at it or review it or think about it, and you have to, you know, come up with, okay, to schedule a plan, a public hearing or not. I, I just think that you.
I wasn't aware there was a 10-day limit, so that's, that's fine for me.
Five days from now.
Five days from zoning, 10.
10 for planning.
10 for planning, 10 for zoning.
So.
So I'm.
I wonder why is that?
Actually, he sent it to you on April 6th, he sent it to everybody on April 6th, that the packets were ready. But what you're saying is this application wasn't ready till.
When I just walked in.
Five minutes before the meeting.
Right, yeah. She was copying it as I walked in, so all you guys.
Well, that's because they brought it in today.
In the afternoon, yeah.
That's not the way we were supposed to do it.
Right. So either they should have submitted it five days ago, or they can put it in today, but then they wait until the next meeting.
Yeah.
I had to bring one in city Rensselaer today, a full month in advance, had to be there today for next month, for a simple thing.
So did you, so you don't know if you have, I see, I'm just wondering if I, if you had the email or not.
I don't have, I don't have one from you.
It came jrock@adamrock@stone.com.
Is that the right one?
Yep. For, to do what?
Excuse me?
So what did you send it to me for?
I described all the applications, addresses, names, and description of everything that was going on, and sent it to yourself.
Which is fine, but that only happened today. What I'm saying is.
No, no, I sent this a week ago.
Just you mentioned, he mentioned it in the email, but we didn't have any application.
No, they, they delivered.
They should have.
They handwritten in paperwork yesterday, and they're actually the application, and I just came in tonight, because I was in all day today, and when I left, they must have brought it in after I left, and it was just on my desk when.
Then it's okay to just say, this, when I wrote the, the email, that was last week, they had the time to bring it in to you, to give you enough time, I, we, we corresponded back and forth about this. So we knew it was coming, they should have given you the application.
They didn't even know they had to throw out an application.
Well, then.
I know.
Then.
There was a lot of, I think, miscommunication, right?
There was no miscommunication that they had to come down to the, to. It's okay to say, I can't put it on, and just change it.
The problem, the problem was it got squeezed from planning, or they, they went to take the planning. They should have within two days after the planning meeting submitted their application.
Right.
Yeah, called me up before the meeting of the planning.
I understand that.
I went down there.
They, it's their, their.
It's their responsibility to do it.
Get it done within that time.
And I was under the impression that she wanted to do this, and she would have put an application in.
Yeah.
The next day, which is when they said, right, that would have been okay.
Yeah, well, it's five business days.
Oh, five business days.
Yeah.
So it's just so tight between, you know, then last week and now being here.
So I think what Mr. Hackelman's alluding to too, is Stephanie, as well as the communication. When they left the planning board, did they realize they needed to get that application?
Yeah, that's.
So I think it's being very clear to the applicants what the expectation is.
Well, they knew that they had to get the application in, because they.
Didn't know the timeframe maybe, yeah. But absent, you know, who's the onus on with that? I think it's on all of us, so that we don't fall into this. So if they're given the information and they choose not to get it in for the day of the zoning board meeting, I'm sorry, you're not going to be here tonight. It's going to be postponed until following month.
And Stephanie, it's okay to just say, I know you said to put them on the schedule, however, I don't have an application yet. If they get an application in five days before, that'll be fine. If not, that's fine, just, just let me know and I, I will.
Right, because that's what I called you yesterday, because he, because he handed me all that papers with the writing. And I thought, well, I don't, isn't he supposed to have an application with it? So that's what, yeah, I called you and I just wanted to make sure that I gave him the right application, because he didn't have one at that point.
Right, that's.
It could have come tonight for a discussion, but you couldn't have acted on anything, really. That's, basically, informational thing, but not acting on an application.
This would have been a good discussion before the meeting.
Yeah, but the other point with that, that's good, is that my concern on a few occasions has been bouncing people in and out of these meetings unnecessarily. So when they know ahead of time, this is the expectation.
His father was the chairman of the zoning board for about 20 years.
It's Doug's father was, pretty much wrote the code.
Yeah, he's, he should have been consulting with his father.
Any other?
Well said by yourself.
Thank you, I'll be performing here all night. Now.
And how much is that going to cost?
An eight bucks. Do you have anything, sir?
I just wonder if we should consider spacing out the two planning board and zoning board meetings, so they aren't back to back, only a week apart. It could be two weeks apart.
That's.
Because their, their application is relatively simple, but if they had more detail, most complex, they may need extra time.
I mean, we don't have to act on it right then and there anyways. That's, I, I'm talking with anything, you know?
I'm not, frankly, because I think that we need to be respectful of people's time.
No, no, I'm, I mean, we're either going to have it, it's got to be within three weeks of the planning board. So it would all be relative to it, so.
Open your own private surveyors.
So start meeting the Tuesday instead of the second Tuesday, then that would.
Well, then at that point, that's good.
I, I, we just, personally, I've had experience before you're running around like crazy.
I mean, it works both ways too. I mean, if we were to refer to the planning board, they would need 10 days to get in front of it. So we'd have to leave that 10 day barrier or to 10 day window. It's, it's kind of hard, but only 20 business days in a month.
That happens less often.
Yeah.
Well, I think if the wait, if the wait period for both of them were the same, it would make life easier, because then you would just know you couldn't go on to the next meeting. But right now, we're squeezing between planning and, and zoning, saying we can refer somebody to zoning. But they have to have their application in that day in order for it to happen.
And they may not even know that they need the application until that day. So that's, because there really wasn't time between.
Well, they really had to have the application in that night, really, in order for it to make.
Exactly, so there really is a time between that week, so it's, it's.
So even like he said, it was kind of pressed for him, because he didn't know, and so then he was trying to get all the information required in. And it's just.
Okay.
Every, no matter what, like you say, no matter which way you go, you're going to be pressed for time. If, if they have weeks, 10 days, then to go back to planning, so I don't see how changes.
Yeah, I think we'll just move it one way or another. But.
We try to do it as a courtesy to them, but they really need to have paperwork in hand and the night of the meeting, and that's, you know, not typical.
That's really how I look at it, is if they really wanted it, which is, that was my fault, you know, it seemed like they were going to put it in. I didn't realize they didn't put it in.
I didn't realize they didn't have an application, because I, I didn't have any information on them till yesterday, when they actually brought me the, the written parts. So I didn't, I didn't know what was our.
So is our agenda, this is just, so what if I have five business days before?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and that's, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
So there's a, you know, and it's, if somebody does want to, I, I, I understand not wanting people to wait, but they also have to live by, you know.
Yeah, no, I understand that, it's just, I think that if someone had suggested, you know, this could have been a discussion. I've been on this board long enough where I've seen people who've come back and come back.
Yeah, I know, I've had it.
And that just, it's disrespectful of their times. You think you can avoid it, I mean, if it's something that has done, but you, you're now how many months into the ability to do the project if it's going to date. That's my concern.
We can always, in, in other cases, just have us, us, another meeting, a public hearing on a different date. So that's also an option if there's a real issue.
That's like I say, I think a lot of it happens with planning board, like Susan's saying, with coming back and forth, and I think this thing was worn in on time, but. You know, just coming in and discussing it in the public hearing, like. I mean, everything worked out tonight, but that's not necessarily always going to be the case.
Yeah.
No, I think as long as we're clearly communicating to people when they come into this building what the expectation is.
Right.
And what's on them, what's on us, so that there's no surprises, they don't show up thinking they're going to be able to go build the garage.
And I try to give everybody on the board and you guys a heads up, so. Maybe you should.
What are the hours?
Get my email on to your job folder. I'm just kidding.
When can they, how do they know, you say, oh, five days, like what are, what are your hours?
We put on the website that I'm here on Tuesday, definitely, 9:30 to 2:30. That's my definite day. But I'm here every day, I mean, literally, I'm here every day, even though.
Can you bring this to the town clerk?
Yep, Tiffany can, if they want to drop it up, Tiffany can take it, Sue can take it. Like I said, chances of me not being here is going to, is very slim. I mean, I have to leave by 2:30 because I get my girls off the bus, but other than that, I am here.
Is there an information sheet that is given to people regarding the process?
I'm, I'm assuming that when they get the application, that that's the information, that they're, they know what to do and what to have. I'm not so sure there's enough information on it, because we now have a garage that's going to the planning board, and he was kind of unsure of what else he needed to put in. So I talked to Tom and said, you know, what else do we need? Because he, he put this in, you know, the beginning of the week for next month. So I don't know if there's just like not enough information, you know, that they need this, this, and this. You know, like he needed to have the well and the septic showing on the map before he comes and certain things. And I'm, I don't know. I just call.
Know what I mean, I, I just, again, looking for really clear communication, so people understand.
I don't know, I wonder if something got lost in the transition from when Judy was, you know, planning and zoning clerk, and all of that and everything, like right in mind, compared to how many have been there since Judy and everything. But maybe something that dropped in there was, I can ask her.
I think it'd be worth looking at to make sure that whomever, I'm sorry for one of this conversation, but I'm concerned that whomever's coming in here understands, you know, what the process is. And I know Judy had all of these things inside her mouth.
I usually talk with people beforehand, I think, I mean, Stephanie's just started, we're looking for the applications, because we, you said, we didn't know where the application was.
Yeah, I had, I had, I had to go through a lot of the files that were in there, and I had to really clean it out, because there was stuff in there that, I mean, was very irrelevant. So I've just started being able to figure out what applications are what, and I've made copies of different ones in the, in the folders, and I put them behind my desk, so now that I can.
I think.
So I'm just getting organized.
There's startup issues and also just, as I try to talk, you know, I talk to the applicants, they usually go to the house or the site, whatever it is, and, you know, go through the stuff. They don't have an application, but maybe I'll do that, just so that they know the process.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
That's generally what we do right now, but I didn't know about five days, so.
And you have to think too, remember, Judy always trained the next person coming in, because I went through a few for a while, and then it was nothing, because the people had left, and so nobody trained.
I have no training, trust me. I mean, if it wasn't for Tiffany, I would have, literally, poor Tiff, I run in her office like every 30 seconds.
I tend to think things will, will get better as we get a little bit more organized, and we've been running without, you know, Tiffany's been covering for, I don't know how long.
I'll ask Judy if she ever had any, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, she's definitely got stuff, I know. I think Lynn would always basically just describe the person, to the person whenever they came in, this is what you got to do. There is the, the last page here, I'm just opening the application, does have all the list of things that are required, checklist of materials that must accompany this application. I mean, it doesn't say specifically what the schedule is, okay, we have to come, you know, have a discussion first and then public hearing and then.
But again, Judy trained Lynn, so meanwhile, I had all the answers for the person coming in in addition to the application, whereas Steph hasn't had anybody to train her.
And are these applica, are these all online, the applications, or you'd have to come in and get them?
You can get them offline.
You can, somebody can print them and get the instructions and, and should put that out, the information that should be five or 10 days in advance.
Yeah, that, that, I agree with that just.
It should be all on the website.
On the website to say applications would be five business days ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, it says that if they go on for the application, it does say it on the application. Tiffany and I looked at it today, somewhere on there, it says, I don't know if this one's got it, it does say five days prior. Maybe this one doesn't say it, everyone does, though. On the website, it does say, if they read the thing, it does say right there, 10 days, five days, whichever one they're doing. Yeah, it, I think it's on the web.
Okay, it just, should be out, a little clearer.
Well, it is on this application, but it's so dark you can't read it, so, from photocopying, I think.
I thought that was top secret stuff.
No, that is actually where it says.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, but you can't see it on that application.
So someone tried to highlight it so you can see it better.
Yeah, apparently, yes.
It's redacted.
Yep, so.
It's top secret.
So I have, when I come back, I'll have to run up a bunch of new ones that, because these are ones that were still in the file.
There's a whole bunch of other things that go into the application, like really answering the questions that are asked, some of the stuff. Because some of the questions, they're not really understanding it, but that's typical, that's why we have the meeting here and then the public hearing.
Maybe something that we're supposed to send to the planning board, a copy of the application, and they're supposed to give us feedback, does that, does that happen during the hearing, where they're supposed to do that, I guess?
Yeah, we have to do that.
So for everything or only for, for, most times, if you have a variance, if, say, you're getting an area variance, it's a smaller lot, it has to go to the planning board for their recommendation. It doesn't, they don't have to, they could have, either give no recommendation or positive or negative, but then, and then it goes back to the zoning board for them to give a variance on, for lot size only, not for a garage.
No, it says for any appeal, so I'm reading here, by transmitting to the clerk of the planning board. So it's the clerk, so you're the clerk for.
So that was something.
But a copy of any appeal for a variance together with a copy of the notice of such hearing at least 30 calendar days prior to the date thereof. The Board of Appeals showed request that the planning board submit to the Board of Appeals an advisory opinion prior to the date of such hearing.
Yeah, 30 days, though that would figure out two months.
Yeah, you have to, they organize, let's say, every other week and, and say like the zoning board is once a month and the planning board is twice a month. And they try to organize so the referrals go back.
We used to do it before their, like the next meeting, so that the planning board could do it for the next, you know, have their review, and then the week after, we did our.
It's not 30 days before the planning board meeting or 30 days before this meeting, it's 30 days before the hearing, so.
So even, I didn't know that, so even like that garage application should go, should go to them.
Yeah, but see, that, that puts it out.
That hasn't been done in a while. Are you doing any of that?
We used to send the, get the planning board opinion on it, but we didn't follow that timeline, because like right now, we've got 30 days to the public hearing.
I thought it was.
Also, it's, we have to transmit to the clerk of the planning board, so, because the, the planning board itself, so the clerk of the planning board is the same person as the clerk of the zoning board, so I think that's.
Yeah, you have more, more to do.
You have no idea, this would be like thrown to the wolves, honestly. I, it was like, I, Tiffany showed me my office and she's like, you might want to read through these first and then go through the files, and I said, I have no idea. Well, that's what I do, I call Tom or I call you or I call Tiffany, because it's like, you know, like I said, I didn't, he didn't have an application. When he came in yesterday, he just handed me the papers, and I knew he was at the board, the planning board meeting, and I didn't realize he didn't have an application, because I had no information for him prior. So then, when he came in yesterday and handed me the papers, I'm like, well, you need an application. And that's when it was like, okay, well, what, what application are we doing? So like, cool, just like, but.
This is, I mean, then, you know, for something like this, if it happens again, and you see somebody's coming, the other board or vice versa, just say, make sure you have your application, you know, you tell, tell Tom, and he'll just say to them.
Yep.
Have, have your zoning, you want to get in front of the zoning board, have your application in. You tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, be ready.
From now on, I'll just make sure if they are going to go from one to the other, that, you know, just kind of remind somebody that, hey, they need, make sure they have the right application.
Yeah, that's.
And it can be filled out, and to me, at least, I don't mind a couple of days, but not five minutes before the meeting when they dropped it.
It's perfectly reasonable to say, you know, if, if they come in, right, you know. You know, or give, give, give me a call and, and we'll talk.
Yeah, I mean, because I knew they were coming in and they had planned it, so tonight I was just like, you know, when he dropped it, he said, I will get it to you tomorrow, I'm not sure when. And I said, well, just make sure I have, at least have it before the meeting, so I can have it set for, you know, for the board. So, you know, because he wasn't sure, he didn't, he didn't even have an application or know what he needed.
And, and that guy's just referring back to me.
Okay. Okay.
But you're going to speak to Judy? I wonder if she would consider...
Ready? It's going to be my exposure.
That would be wonderful.
Really, because it's...
There's a lot...
This is unnecessary.
And you're not coming in with a streamlined system.
No.
Tiffany was home with the other because, like I said, how many people did we have? And she was doing, I don't know, five or six jobs. And so she's happy to throw it to you.
Oh, she was... Yeah, she was very happy to throw it to me, so she said, "Hey."
Any training for any of the people?
I don't think so.
And I can see... I could see where they get frustrated.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's the same, but, yeah.
Yeah. It is very frustrating. I'm not going to lie.
I'm sure.
It's very frustrating.
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure they have the right papers. And, I mean, you know, I'm... I already told Tiffany, I'm over my hours. I'm only allowed 10 to 12 a week. That's not a lot, especially on when it's a week that I'm doing minutes. A minute takes me, like, a whole day by the time I get them done. And then it has to be revised, and, you know... So that week, I'm always, always over my hours. You know, still trying to get, you know, get all the... Get all the applications where I have them, so I know where they are.
10 hours for just zoning or for both zoning and planning?
For the week. 10 to 12 hours a week is all I'm allowed. And I've been putting in... I know I'm over, but I'm putting in 18 to almost 20 a week.
Well, I think in the beginning, in particular, as you learn it...
It gets easier.
It's going to take more time to do these things. And especially when you're coming in in this position where you're kind of picking up the pieces. You know, the...
Yeah.
We can all sympathize with that.
Yes. And we want you to stay.
All right. I did message Tiffany. She said she was coming back, so if she comes back, I'll have her get those papers from the...
Back tonight?
She's got to come back and get the computer.
Oh.
Check the...
She was going to shut that down.
Yeah. Yeah. But if not, I'll... I sent her a note. I'm going to have her just contact you so that she knows exactly what she needs to get you.
So I think the one thing that needs to happen is that the planning board agenda, I guess they should just have copies of these applications that we just discussed tonight, and then they can give us their... Honestly, they have already given us their feedback about the one that they sent to us. I guess it used to be just, most of the time, you just get a two-line memo that said they didn't have any...
Yeah, we used to have those. Yes, just put that on the ergon side, I guess. For anything for a public hearing.
Okay.
It's just so, just like we send out to all the neighbors, we send out to the planning board.
Okay. So whatever we send out for public hearing, we just send out to everybody else on the board?
On the planning board, just as a...
On their...
Yeah, a correspondence from one board to the other, and they can say, "Yeah, we looked at it, and this is our picture."
And if they don't respond, then... It says that... I'm not kidding.
It says, "We assume they don't care."
Yeah.
That's what it says.
I don't think so. How about... We'll make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, they're... We've already got them on there.
Upon failure of the planning board to submit a report, said board shall be deemed to have recommended approval of the application.
So they do care.
You deem them not to care.
Yes.
They... It says everything's...
I think we already had a motion to adjourn. Is that true?
Yes, yes.
Anything else? Anything else? All in favor?
I'm going to second that.
I think so, babe, it's...
Now, follow them.
First in place.
Okay, well, it's been through this.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did. You did, okay. The second, five, aye, motion to adjourn. Yes, save your money.
I know. I don't want to...
Okay, thank you.
He's also...
I'll ask. I think he always chatted it out.
I did the same thing. Went to two years, and then three years. And I liked it because I had a step or so. Something.
Did he think about engineering or anything?
He's thinking about it. He's saying, yes, he was going to be a doctor for a while. Then he was going to be an engineer, and then, I don't know, I think it's between those two things, or... Yeah, when he was going for... Was commissioned. With that current.
But I guess...
They started through all the officers, and they said, "Ellen, this is..."
Was not the case.
Joey, and he's going to... Does this, this...